On New Yorkers' confidence and trust in our city government. New Yorkers should have faith that their government will effectively meet their needs while upholding democracy, the law, and good governance. The people of our city must be the priority of government with a focus on confronting the challenges they are facing. Let's be clear. Anyone accused of a crime deserves due process, the presumption of innocence, and the ability to defend themselves. At the same time, the ability to govern must be the top concern of city officials. I remain deeply concerned about the impact of all of this on our city government and on New Yorkers. This is a painful time and a distraction for the hard-working public servants in City Hall and throughout our city government. My concern is for them. New York's workforce is the greatest of all. We thank these hard-working professionals for continuing to serve our constituents despite these tough challenges. These are serious challenges and charges. There are major questions about how the serious nature of the allegations affect one's ability to govern. I ask the mayor to seriously and honestly consider whether full attention can be given to our deserving New Yorkers who need our government to be sound and stable. The City Council continues to remain focused on the work of serving the New Yorkers we represent in all five boroughs. We cannot afford to stray from addressing the priorities of our city, and we will demonstrate that in the laws we pass today to provide housing, improve maternal health, and advance forward-moving environmental policies. We will continue as a council to prioritize governing for the people of this city and advance efforts that bring stability and trust in city government. Now let's move on to our stated agenda. First, we will vote on the following land use items. Memorial Sloan Kettering Pavilion will facilitate the development of a new 31-story hospital building in Councilmember Menon's district. The hospital will contain 28 open rooms, 206 patient beds, and a two-story enclosed patient bridge over East 67th Street connecting the new development with Memorial Hospital on the main block. The council also secured more than $10 million in commitments from Memorial Sloan Kettering to support construction mitigation efforts, community infrastructure investments, and other improvements for the surrounding neighborhood. The project will deliver results for the Upper East Side community, New Yorkers, and people who come from around the country to seek world-class health care and treatment. Malcolm Shabazz Harlem Plaza, an HPD application for a UDOTAP approval and disposition of city-owned property to facilitate the construction of one new mixed-use building in Councilmember Salam's district. It will include two nine-story towers containing 108 affordable units through HPD's extremely low and low-income affordability program, and a new community facility space for the pre-existing vendor's market. 150 Mill Street rezoning will facilitate the development of a mixed-use commercial and industrial building in Councilmember Aviles District. 250 86th Street rezoning will facilitate the legalization of a two-story mixed-use building containing medical offices and residential space in Councilmember Brannon's district. The council will modify this application to change the proposed R6B district to an R5D district and modify the rezoning area boundaries. 2390 McDonnell Avenue rezoning will facilitate a new eight-story mixed-use building with 80 housing units including approximately 24 affordable units under MIH, retail and medical office space in Councilmember Yeager's district. Two applications in Councilmember Osay's district, Marcus Garvey Boulevard, an HPD application for an Article 11 tax exemption to facilitate the construction of two-ten story mixed-use buildings consisting of 155 affordable units under HPD's Ella program and retail space. The Willoughby Heart Historic District, a Landmarks Preservation Commission application to create a new historic district in Bedford-Stuyvesant. The designation includes two blocks of the late 19th-century rowhouses constructed in the neo-Greek style that, over the years, were home to a diversity of New Yorkers including German and Irish immigrants of the mid-19th century, Russian Jewish immigrants of the 1920s and '30s, and the city's largest black community in the mid-20th century. Two applications in Councilmember Caban's district, 21st Street rezoning, will facilitate the redevelopment of two vacant sites near Astoria Park with new mixed-use buildings including 92 homeownership units, 28 of which will be affordable homeownership under MIH. 31-1712th Street rezoning will facilitate a new five-story residential building with 35 housing units, nine of which will be permanently affordable units under MIH. The council will modify this application to add a deep affordability option. Lastly, two sidewalk café applications. The council will approve Seis Vasinos Restaurant's application for revocable consent to operate a sidewalk café in Councilmember Salamanca's district. And the council will disapprove Cozy Corner Bars' application for revocable consent to operate a sidewalk café in Councilmember Holden's district. Today, we will also vote on the following pieces of legislation. Introduction 353A, sponsored by Councilmember Sandy Nurse, would require the Department of Citywide Administrative Services to install at least 150 megawatts of solar power on city-owned property by December 31, 2035. The bill would also require DCAST to meet several interim deadlines, including having 100 megawatts completed and the location of the remaining 50 megawatts planned by 2030. In selecting sites for solar installations, DCAST would be required to prioritize properties in disadvantaged communities. As we mark Climate Week NYC this week, the council will continue to pass bills that advance efforts to combat the climate crisis. Councilmember Nurse, there you are. I invite you to come up and speak to us about your important legislation today.
Thank you, Speaker. Good afternoon, everyone, and happy Climate Week. I'm sure you're excited to hear about public solar today. So actually, we introduced this bill, Intro 353, last year during Climate Week, and we're really excited to be able to vote on it and pass it this year. This bill has the most sponsors out of any of the bills this session. It's bipartisan. We have over 46 sponsors, two borough presidents, our public advocates, and what it will do is require the city to put 150 megawatts of solar power on our public buildings, our schools, our industrial sites, our parking lots by 2035. It also mandates that we get 100 megawatts of it up by 2030. And this bill was put together by Climate Jobs New York, a labor coalition, Climate Works for All, a bunch of climate justice and environmental justice groups, and we've been working on it for over a year now. So really, really excited to get this over the finish line. And through this legislative process, the labor unions were actually able to ink out a deal with the New York Power Authority for powers purchase agreements, which will help us fast-track and get this goal completed. So, you know, the stakes really couldn't be higher. Since we introduced this bill last year, the U.S. has had over 20 confirmed climate events that have caused over a billion or more in damage. And since 1980, we've had over $4 trillion in damage from climate events. New York State is on track to exceed the CLCPA's goal of installing six gigawatts of solar capacity by 2035, and today, we're just making sure that New York City does its part to help us get to that goal. This bill also prioritizes installations of solar power in disadvantaged communities, environmental justice communities, who already bear the brunt of environmental racism. And I really believe this is proof that when labor, environmental justice advocates, the council comes together, we're really able to achieve something. I'm really proud of this bill, and I want to thank the speaker. I want to thank Jeremy John, Jeff Baker, Christopher Murray, Austin Malone, my ledge director, Ryan Hickey, my former ledge director, Dearest Anell Hernandez, Patricio Santana, Climate Jobs New York, and Climate Works for All. Thank you all.
Thank you very much. Next, Introduction 346A, sponsored by Councilmember Mercedes Narcisse, would permit pedestrians to legally cross a roadway at any point, including outside of a marked or unmarked crosswalk, and allow for crossing against traffic signals. It would legalize the activity commonly referred to as jaywalking and specify that crossing against a traffic signal or outside of a crosswalk would not be a violation of the Administrative Code and therefore can no longer be the subject of a summons. The bill would also require the Department of Transportation to conduct an education effort regarding the rights and responsibilities of pedestrians and of operators of motor vehicles, bicycles, and any other mobility device on city roadways. I invite Councilmember Narcisse to discuss this legislation finally.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. It's a pleasure to be here to discuss this. I know the environment is tense, but this is a great bill. Today, we have the chance to take an important step toward fairness and equity and public safety with the vote on Intro number 346A. Jaywalking happens everywhere in the neighborhood across New York City. How many people in the room can tell me they never jaywalked? None of you. Honest people in the room. I love that, too. But enforcing has disproportionately impacted certain communities, with 96.5% of jaywalking tickets this year issued to the Black and Hispanic New Yorkers. This bill seeks to address that imbalance. Under Intro number 346A, crossing outside of a crosswalk will no longer be a violation of the Administrative Code and can no longer be the subject of a summons. Having said that, I know I heard some folks saying that can a police officer talk to someone that is in a crosswalk? Absolutely, if there's other reasons, but not to give summons to jaywalking. I have spoken with police officers, and many of them have said they prefer to focus on real public safety concerns rather than stopping people from jaywalking. Let's face it, no one's ever said, "I am so glad they caught that jaywalker. I feel so much safer now." By removing the penalties, we allow our officers to focus on the issues that really matter to public safety. Additionally, this bill requires DOT to conduct an education effort regarding the rights and responsibilities of pedestrian and operators of motor vehicles, bicycles, and other devices on our city streets. That is correct. As a registered nurse in the ER, you know when the accident happened, where they go through the ER, to emergency room. So I want everyone to be safe. That's what I'm standing here for. But the inequities in stopping someone for jaywalking in our community, we're talking about New York City, we are supposed to work together, the capital of the world, so we have to lead by example, and that's the reason I'm here. This is crucial for ensuring that everyone understands how to use streets safely and responsibly, because we want people to be safe. There's no doubt about it. So I want to say thank you to Madam Speaker, the lead, you have lead by example, you had shown that you want to address the inequities in New York City wherever it's supposed to be, and thank you for the legislative team. The team always great to fight for, to make sure that New York City is for all of us and fair to all of us. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. And for the record, I am guilty of jaywalking. I'm so ashamed. On a serious note, though, I'd just like to say, you know, there were some in the media a couple of weeks ago that put out statements regarding this legislation, and I just want to set the record straight. Always come to the source for your information. The reason that this legislation was not passed at the last stated meeting was because we were giving respect to our colleague, Councilmember Mercedes Narcisse, who lost her father and was out of state burying him. Okay. You can always come to the source. Introduction 736A, sponsored by Councilmember Sean Abreu, would require the Department of Health and Mental Hygiene in consultation with the Department of Sanitation and an expert in rodent control, Sean is an expert in rodent control, to establish a pilot program to deploy rat contraceptives within 180 days of the bill's enactment for a period of at least 12 months. DOHMH would be required to establish two pilot program areas and at least one comparison area with similar building types. During the pilot program, DOHMH would be required to perform monthly inspections of such areas to track signs of rats. After the pilot period, DOHMH would be required to provide a report to the mayor and the council of its findings and other information collected during the pilot program. I invite Councilmember Abreu to discuss this bill.
Thank you, Speaker Adams. As you could tell, I love rats. Today, the council will vote on my legislation, Intro 736, which would create a pilot program for rat contraceptives. The battle against the city's rats has predated us, and it will outlast us. If the past 24 hours has been any indication, rats are winning this war. Winning this war, however, doesn't mean a complete eradication of the other side. Instead, we need to learn how to manage the rat population and get it down to a reasonable level and employ alternative pest management strategies so New Yorkers can have more peace of mind as they wander about on our streets. I want to thank the light-out coalition and the advocates that have worked extensively with us on this bill in memory of Flacco, our friend on the Upper West Side whose life outside of captivity was cut short after ingesting a poisoned rat. I also want to thank Madam Speaker Adrian Adams and all of my colleagues on the council who've signed on. We've been proud to have a supermajority of council members in support of this legislation. We need more non-toxic, environmentally-friendly solutions to pest management in New York City like rat birth control and trash containerization. With today's passage, I'm encouraged that we are headed in the right direction. The days of fighting with outdated methods will hopefully soon be over. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilmember. No more answers. Finally, we will be voting on a package of bills and resolutions to address maternal mental health, which represent the third stop of the council's mental health roadmap. The legislation we're passing today came out of priorities outlined in my State of the City address that are aimed at addressing the mental health challenges faced by new parents and others. The bills include providing support for individuals during postpartum, which is a particularly challenging period for mothers and their health. The maternal health of Black women and other people who can become pregnant is a matter of life and death, and for our Women Majority Council, this issue is personal. Nationwide and in our city, we are still seeing far too many women in certain communities suffer preventable complications and deaths during pregnancy and childbirth. Recent data reveal that Black New Yorkers are six times more likely to die due to pregnancy-related causes than their white counterparts. Too often, Black women have their pain and symptoms dismissed by medical professionals, leading to delayed diagnoses and insufficient care. Addressing these longstanding inequities requires sustained focus and ongoing action, and this council has been clear about the need to deliver results. We will continue to advance comprehensive and holistic solutions to confront this growing crisis, and we will vote on the following resolution sponsored by Councilmember Lynda Lee. Resolution 402 would call on the New York State Legislature to pass and the governor to sign legislation to require health insurance plans to develop and implement a maternal mental health quality management program to promote access to affordable and comprehensive maternal mental health services. Resolution 403 would call upon the state legislature to pass and the governor to sign legislation mandating all accredited psychiatry residency programs to offer a one-year post-residency fellowship program specifically focused on perinatal mental health. Resolution 404 would call on the state legislature to pass and the governor to sign legislation to require OB-GYNs to conduct maternal mental health screening during pregnancy and postpartum and to require Medicaid to cover such services. Resolution 405 would call upon the state legislature to pass and the governor to sign legislation mandating Medicaid-managed care organizations to collect and report prenatal and postpartum depression screenings and follow-up data using HEDIS measures. And Resolution 406 would designate May annually as Maternal Mental Health Awareness Month in the city of New York and calling on the state legislature to pass and the governor to sign S156/A6603, which would make the same designations statewide. Next, Introduction 651, sponsored by Councilmember Kevin Riley, would require the Commissioner of Health and Mental Hygiene to create materials that provide information about the effects of pregnancy loss on mental health and identify mental health resources available to individuals who have experienced pregnancy loss. The commissioner would be required to distribute physical copies of these materials to all facilities operated by the Department of Health and Mental Hygiene that provide reproductive health care and to post electronic copies on the department's website. Additionally, the commissioner must, to the extent practicable, inform family planning clinics within the city and hospital departments primarily providing reproductive health care about the availability of these materials and make physical copies available to them upon request. I now invite Councilmember Riley to the podium to discuss this legislation.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Good afternoon, everyone. I'm deeply honored to stand here today in a time when parts of this country are rolling back critical protections for women's health. The New York City Council is moving forward, taking bold steps to provide much-needed support and resources to individuals experiencing pregnancy loss. My bill, Intro 651, co-sponsored by 22 of my colleagues, require the Commissioner of Health and Mental Hygiene to create and distribute materials that not only address the effects of pregnancy loss, but more importantly, connects families to vital mental health resources available designated in citywide languages. These materials will be accessible not only in DOHMH-operated facilities, but also at family planning clinics and hospitals across the city, with physical copies available upon request and digital access through DOHMH websites. Intro 651 tackles what can be one of the most deeply personal and painful experiences a family can face, ensuring that those who endure pregnancy loss have the support they need to navigate this difficult journey. As a council, we take immense pride in enacting policies that empower families and provide them with the care they deserve during the most vulnerable moments. Thank you, Madam Speaker, for allowing me to give my remarks.
Thank you, Councilmember. Introduction 869A, sponsored by Councilmember Jennifer Gutierrez, would require the mayor's Office of Community Mental Health to conduct a public outreach and education campaign to raise awareness about resources available at the city, state, and federal level, addressing mental health challenges faced by parents, including perinatal mood disorders. The campaign would be required to be available in the designated citywide languages. And finally, Introduction 890A, sponsored by Councilmember Lynda Lee, would require the Commissioner of Health and Mental Hygiene to implement a three-year pilot program to establish postpartum support groups focused on the mental health of postpartum individuals. The support groups would be professionally facilitated and provide access to peer support, educational materials and resources on home visiting support, lactation consultants, and other maternal health experts. There would need to be at least one group established in each borough, at least one group established in each of the three community districts with the highest rates of postpartum mental health issues, and at least one group established in each of the three community districts facing the greatest community and geographic impacts due to social determinants of poor mental health. The commissioner would be required to submit to the mayor and the council and post online a report on the program, including recommendations on whether to establish a permanent postpartum support group program. I now invite Councilmember Lee to the program, to the program and the podium, to discuss her legislation and resolutions today.
Thank you so much, Madam Speaker. And I'm very proud to be here today to talk about these package of bills that are so important, that were, you know, part of the speaker's state of the city. So a little over a year ago, this council embarked on the mental health roadmap an ambitious policy plan to help chart a way out of the city's current mental health crisis. And together, we created a blueprint spanning multiple levels of government to address decades of government neglect and the revolving door of hospitalizations, discharges, and arrests that have trapped some of our most vulnerable New Yorkers. And so today, we are here as a women-led council for Stop 3, which is around the physical and mental health support for new and expecting parents and maternal mental health. Many of us in this room know firsthand that the period after childbirth is full of emotional, physical, and psychological challenges. Becoming a parent is wonderful, but it can also be extremely difficult, and I know I definitely felt this with my two kids as well. And due to stigma or complacency, our society has not talked about this nearly as much as it should. For too long, too many of us have suffered in silence while navigating life with a newborn. I will let my colleagues go into more detail, which they have, about specifics of their legislation, but this stop includes legislation that will implement a pilot, sorry, program to establish postpartum support groups, provide parental mental health resources and mental health resources to individuals who have experienced pregnancy loss, and call on our partners at the state level to require health insurance plans to implement a maternal mental health quality management program. There's still a lot of work to do, and I think the reason why this is so important also and the reason why we have resolutions as part of this is because, as we know, the state controls a lot of our insurance with around Medicaid and managed care, and it's really important that these services be covered. And I know that for myself, coming from the AAPI community, the way we express health issues may not be so clear, and it may come out slightly different, right? And unfortunately, I have a friend who recently lost a baby, as well as a friend who passed away, because when she did express some of her concerns, a couple days after she went home from the hospital, she was ignored and unfortunately lost her life. And so these issues are very real and very important, and we need to make sure that we have the cultural competency as well as the support financially to have these services covered. And so I just, I'm so happy and proud to be part of this third stop in the roadmap, and I really, really would love to thank Speaker Adams and also Chair Lewis before for their leadership and partnership to promote maternal mental health. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Councilmember Lee. That does conclude our stated agenda. With that, we will take on topic questions on today's legislation first.
Yes, Speaker, there are a number of bills related with maternal health disparity. We hear Regulate the Act, the Doctors Council, this bill does not have a contract. There's a crisis going on in city hospitals right now. The response of the administration has been to cut 40-minute primary care down to 20-minute visits. You're talking about adding some new requirements and awareness that may be needed, but the reality is, on the ground in the city's hospitals, which act as universal health care, taking all comers, there's a crisis going on, and we have doctors leaving, and we have a huge surge in admissions, both emergency room and hospital admissions, and so far, the Doctors Council hasn't signed a meaningful contract. How are they going to take all these wonderful utopian ideas that need to be implemented when they don't seem to have a partner in the administration resolving the conflict?
I will start, and then I will ask Chair Lee to respond as well. Yeah, I just think that it's very critical that we continue this fight, that's been a fight for decades and decades, to improve health care for women. The situation that you rightfully mentioned is very, very true. However, that does not stop the work of policymakers for doing the right thing overall for the people, particularly for women that have been hurting for so very long. And Councilmember Lee, if you want to join in and talk about the shortage in hospitals.
Sure, sure, sure. So it's the doctors, as well as everything from the nurses on down in the hospitals that are leaving, and I think part of that is due to, you know, the way that the reimbursements are happening, number one. And also, I think the reason why it's important to recognize that the state resolutions be included in this is because even though as a city, we can give the funding, we can help run the city hospitals, which are so important, as you mentioned, because we don't ask for your status of immigration, or if you have insurance, we see everybody, which is so important. But a lot of how the services are delivered do come from the state in terms of how the profession delivers its services. So that's why I think it has to be an important partnership with our state-level government. And so, of course, we're going to try as much as we can, I think I can say this in confidence without overstepping, that, you know, we do want to work with the doctors and physicians to make sure that they're delivering quality care as well as, you know, not rushing it through dictated by insurance. So I think that's an important thing to notate, yeah.
And by me, I had a meeting with the doctors as well, and we understand the timing, and we had a great conversation about even translation, because if you have someone that don't speak the language, you have to get a translator, so that minutes that you're giving is already done. So I spoke to the president as well, and he's a doctor, Dr. Cass, and he's going to work it out, and I'm continuously talking to them, because this is a contract, and we cannot address contracts. You know that, right? So, but we're going to do our very best. So, but we're going to do our very best, my end, to make sure that they're being heard and they get a fair contract, and the minutes should be appropriate for them to see the patient, because that's the priority for us. Thank you.
Come on, we've got some great bills today. There's nothing else to talk about.
Madam Speaker, on the issue of the mayor, if he does, there are many members who are already calling out for resign, and he has said he will not. If it moves in the direction where he will not resign, there are legal mechanisms that can address that, from either the governor, removing the mayor, or there's even an arcane provision in the city charter that would involve you and the Controller and a couple of others, I believe it's called the Inability Committee. I'm wondering if you've even considered that yet, and whether you'd be willing to take that step should things come to that law.
Thank you very much for the question. We are, of course, like I said, very troubled by everything that's transpired. We are not prepared today to give an answer to that question. We will continue to monitor the situation, to be in talks with our colleagues, both at city and state level, as we all monitor the situation and see how this further unfolds. Yeah.
Michelle.
Hi, Michelle.
So, the City Planning Commission, where we yesterday to the mayor's seat, yes, ran on to the council. Sort of in that similar vein, I just wanted to ask how you step talks with the other side of City Hall to announce, you know, coming into Council review and the mayor's case of charges.
Thank you for the question. This is a front burner, you know, for us, for the administration, and quite frankly, we are still in talks with communities across the city when it comes to City of Yes. We have a ways to go as far as getting everybody involved, which is something that I said would happen in my initial framework. That is still pretty much the bedrock for the council to move when it comes to affordable housing anyway, but we want to continue to hear the voices of New Yorkers across the city and work with what is best for every single district in the city when it comes to the City of Yes.
Hi, Kelly.
Hi, Kelly.
How are you?
Good.
I wanted to go back to the mayor resigning. He took a measured approach, not calling on him to resign. Why did you do that window there of the federal, local, and state officials who have asked him to resign, even members within the city capital?
Thank you for the question. Well, the issue of resignation, for me, is a personal choice for the mayor. It is something that he, it is in his purview to think about it. At this point, I'm not going to offer a recommendation for resignation. What I said in the beginning of my statement was that I really would like for the mayor to fully consider honestly and seriously the needs of New Yorkers now that this crisis has befallen the city of New York, and to seriously consider whether or not he can fully give his attention to the work of his administration, to the needs of all New Yorkers of the city of New York, as he contends with this very, very difficult investigation and follow-up.
Can I follow up? Speaking to being able to give a school attention, how do you expect to continue working along the side of him with this cloud of being indicted, and he's going to be obviously distracted, he's not going to be able to be as present when it comes to the needs of New Yorkers? How do you see your relationship with him developing? Have you spoken to him about the indictment? What is your relationship today? Have you had any conversations between last night and today? What is that?
More good questions. Thanks, Kelly. The mayor and I have not spoken regarding the recent developments. I will continue to work with the mayor, to work with his administration, as we always have, to maintain the work for the people that, for me, is the focal point of my work and my members, regardless of what's going on, regardless of, you know, the chaos and confusion. My concern is for the workforce right now, who really drive the work, that make things happen for our individual constituents, overall for the city. I want to make sure the workforce is okay. I want to make sure that our constituents are okay, and that's the focus of this council, to continue to work to the best of our ability, and to, of course, continue to work side-by-side with the administration, as we always have. If the mayor is to continue in his role, as he says he will, I will expect him to fulfill the duties of his role, as we have been doing over these past years, without interruption.
Yeah, hi. I'm wondering, earlier today, at the mayor's press conference, he surrounded himself with black, big leaders. And last night, in the pre-recorded video, he released, he tied this, the impending, the impending charges to the immigration crisis, the city's migrant crisis. I wonder what you make of Adams drawing these attractions, and whether you think he's trying to reframe his narrative to show that he's a target because he's a black man and has been stonier on immigration?
Thank you for that question. I reject the notion when it comes to race, primarily because of so many black leaders right now who are doing exemplary jobs. We have a black Attorney General. We are looking now towards having the first blacks, black speaker in Washington, D.C. by the name of Hakeem Jeffries. I could go on and on and on as far as black leadership is concerned, so I firmly reject that notion as far as being a black person and being the target because of that. As far as the migrant situation, I can't really speak to that. The word, I believe, came out from the President's press conference earlier, saying that the DOJ was independent of anything going on here in New York City. I'm going to stand by what they said at the White House, and that is what I'm going to believe. Thank you.
Madam Speaker, you know, you mentioned it in your initial comments, that this meltdown shakes the faith of New York City voters. Granted, voters put Mayor Adams in office, but what do you tell them now, especially those who've lost complete faith, although the mayor is one man, and there's a lot more of the city government, how do you detract away from the notion that it's all correct?
Well, you know, again, for New Yorkers, I would ask New Yorkers to continue to have faith in this city. For me, and I believe for a great majority of us, this is the greatest city on the planet. Have faith in that, in the foundation that we've all built together as New Yorkers collectively. This council is going to continue to do that work. We are going to continue to be focused on the work for the people of the city of New York. You're going to see that in just a little while when we go into chambers and we deliver great legislation for the people. And I am going to, once again, encourage New Yorkers. In this administration, we have a phenomenal workforce that will continue to do the work in their behalf, and that will continue, in spite of the challenges ahead of them, to do the very best for the people.
Paul.
Hi, Paul. You have sought repeatedly to assert the council's authority. How did the events of the last 24 hours show the importance of that authority, and would you like to see a more streamlined removal mechanism, perhaps even a council impeachment added to the city charter?
Well, I haven't really thought that far in advance, as far as the city charter and impeachment and all of that. I will say that I still stand by the work of this council and in our need for the people to have the authority of advice and consent. I think that we have seen very clearly over these past few weeks even more of a need for this council to have more authority when it comes to placement of individuals in the administration, for the betterment of the administration and for the betterment of the governance of the city as a whole. Thank you.
Madam Speaker, you said that it's crucial, and we all know that the city council works aside with the mayor in order to be effective. Going back to this charter or this special agreement that would actually improve the mayor, I think New Yorkers need to understand the process of the timing of this, because we have a lot of anxiety with people that we talk in the street, as to they don't know what's going on, they are resigning, and now, if this is a job of the city council to do that, how would that take place? Would it be weeks thing, would it be a month thing? I mean, my understanding is that the council site is vacant. Have you talked about this with your staff, as to how you're going to approach this where necessary?
Thank you for the question, and the answer to your question really does reside very strongly within the city charter, and what happens in a series of events per the city charter. And there are a number of avenues that could take place according to the charter. This council would move in accordance with that. So, and we would start, of course, if there were to be a resignation, and we would start with that premise, and then a series of things would take place per the charter. And I think it's been repeated on several stations already today, with the news cycle being what it is, you know, for almost 24 hours now on this subject matter. The public advocate would resume that space, and there would be a 90-day period for there to be a special election held. While the public advocate would assume the responsibilities of the mayor, the speaker would assume the responsibilities of the public advocate, along with the speaker's responsibilities. So, and we would, you know, proceed that way. There are other avenues, of course. We talk, we know the charter permits for a committee. The charter also permits for the governor to put in place her own action, so.
Speaker Adams, that would have been important. Have you just followed that? Have you had conversations with the local and or the advocate in the line with it?
I have not, since, you know, what's transpired has gone on, I have not yet had conversations with either, yet. Thank you.
Yeah, even before the pandemic was down, we saw lots of key absence cases, and very important decisions, and the government, law enforcement hasn't had a head in months. Have you seen the mayor's ability to govern affected by this, and if so, how?
Have I seen the mayor's ability to govern over the past few weeks, over the items that you just said, the vacancy as far as corp counsel and everything else? I really have not. I've been focused on doing the work of the council, quite frankly, and our staff move with the administrative staff. So, in my role as Speaker and really managing these 50 districts, for all of my amazing colleagues here, I have not really seen a difference, quite frankly, in the way that the mayor has governed over the past few weeks. I have not.
Madam Speaker, you say you're not there yet as far as the council taking action, or you're calling on them to resign. Is there a line for you, in your mind, if you would share, or if you have a moment for you, or you would change your mind?
That's still under consideration, given everything that's happened over the past few hours. I'm going to just hold off on comment with that. There are so many variables going on right now with the administration, as far as the information coming out, with the investigation, with the indictment, whether or not there will be more, as we can continue to see if there will be more shoes to drop. I will have to wait and see if there are more shoes to drop, so I will reserve comments on that.
I have a round two changes, Kelly and Bob last question.
Do you have two questions? First, the mayor has referred to you and him as siblings, he's called you his sister. Do you consider, do you consider him to be your, his sister?
That's a great question. You know, in the culture, we call ourselves brothers and sisters in the culture, those of you that understand what I'm saying. So, the brother over here understands what I'm saying. So, but I'm just saying.
Exactly.
Exactly, right, my brother.
And it's struggling.
So, it could very well be a figure of speech, but no, the mayor and I have known each other, you know, since we were 16, 17 years old. So, when he refers to me as sister, I refer to him as brother. It is in a familial sense, in a familial sense. So, it is out of respect, it is out of camaraderie. So, I suppose the answer to your question is yes. I do consider him a brother. I consider him a brother, consider Kevin Riley a brother. Yes, the answer is yes.
Second question, can you, and forgive me if others have asked this, have you discussed with the other four members, or any member of the Inability Committee, this topic?
No, have not.
Over the last 24 hours, as you voiced, that, you know, just a lot has been going on, and you're asking New Yorkers to keep that faith, that beacon of hope with, you know, just everything that has unfolded. What can you offer New Yorkers as that beacon of hope to kind of stand in that faith, you know, just with the whole chaotic indictment situation happening at the moment?
Yeah, thank you for that question, very critical one. I think that the council has proven time and time again to hold a steady ship. We're going to continue to do that. We're going to continue to hold a steady ship on this side of City Hall. We're going to continue to do our work. We have hearings pretty much every single day, and multiple hearings, for the benefit of the people. The public come in, and they give their advice to us, they give their opinions to us, they give their testimony to us. That is still very critical. We encourage the public to continue to watch the calendar of the City Council, come in and participate. This is the public's government. We're going to continue to conduct the business of the people, as we always have, inclusive of New Yorkers coming into those chambers that I walk into, you know, pretty much on a daily basis, and are so honored to do that. So, I'm going to encourage all New Yorkers to join us in partnership to help us continue to govern this city in the best interest of them, of New Yorkers, that we believe in, because we have faith in this city, we have faith in this council, the work that we're doing. Again, watch these bills that we're going to pass today. It is for the benefit of so many people that have needed this legislation for so long. I could go on and on about this majority of women who govern so very differently than any other body that we have seen prior to this one. We take our lived experiences and we create policy that will affect not just New York, but the nation. So, we are turning the tide in this council for women, for families, working families, for the nuts and bolts, the grassroots folks that really need us the most. This is what this council is all about, because we are our own best constituent.
Yeah, so, Speaker, anybody who covers this council knows that this city was hurting, and still hurting, close pandemic.
Yes.
When the FALWAY decided to declare the pandemic over, unwind Medicaid, not renew the expanded child payer tax credit, EDP blew up, all kinds of, everything for food stamps, and everything was overwhelmed. The civil service, thousands died, many civil service.
My parents.
Yeah, exactly. And Governor App decides to cynically send and weaponize the misery of 2,000, 200,000 immigrants living through sanctuary, or rural, to New York City, and it creates tension, and this is real. When we open law in the BAI, people call in whose family do not have shelter, who did it their whole life, and they hear that migrants are getting, as they read the post, super preferential treatment. Are you concerned that if the mayor puts this prosecution off on this issue, that the work that Councilmember Narcisse just described, the off-camera work you do to try to keep equanimity in the city, would that undermine that?
That is such a great question. And you know, Bob, and it gets to be a little complicated for us in the council, because we truly are about equity. We have to take care of New Yorkers, we have to take care of home, but we also have to take care of, by law, new New Yorkers. So, what we're not going to do is blame migrants for their situation. We are not going to blame migrants for a situation that they have come into, that New York is now under law, that has to follow our laws, to make sure that they are taken care of in accordance. So, what we're going to continue to do as a council is, we're going to continue to dig our heels in, to work towards equity, primarily for the people of the city of New York. I think that I agree with you. Some New Yorkers do feel that they have been put off and misplaced because of others who have come in now and seemingly... who have come in now and seemingly, by perception, have filled a space. I don't think that that is a clear understanding, though, of what is going on. I think there's been a lot of misinformation that people actually do believe, so I think that's a greater conversation that we all need to have, and I thank you for that question, so important. Thank you. Thanks, everybody. Thank you, Madam Speaker. Thank you.